Twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, the order. We've been correctly stored the role of members.
Mayor Merrifield?
Here.
Councilor Rice? Councilor Yan?
Here.
Councilor Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Bloodsoe?
Here.
Councilor Grub?
Here.
Councilor Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Manella?
Here.
Councilmember Blood?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Rice, he's got a work obligation. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He's excused. Okay, if you'd all stand for the opening ceremonies, the prayer will be led by Dee Dee Mina, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Mason.
I hadn't planned to be here, Dick and David Lester's wife is extremely ill, she's in Pittsburgh for a major surgery tomorrow, so I wanted to keep him in our prayers. And I just came from vacation Bible school down the road.
How much you dressed up?
I know, I know. I said I wanted to dress up, show off before you all make a prayer. Gracious Lord our Father, we lift to you our prayers this evening. We lift to you the prayers of other towns in Marion County, and elected new people to different positions. We pray for their success, to do your will. We pray for those who are behind the seats here, pray for the new city manager. Pray to continue, our Father, that thy will be done in all that happens. We give you thanks for the events in Fairmont in the past few weeks, for showing forth the glory of Fairmont, from the Juneteenth celebration of Windmill Park, to the heritage of coal, to Father's Day, and to other events that will be coming up over the course. What shall bring guide us through all these events and circumstances. Through your will, our Father, through your heavenly grace, mold us into what we can be as a fabric of bringing the kingdom of heaven, here not only on Main Street in Fairmont, but throughout the area, and indeed as we work with the county to necessitate programs that will bring us all together in unity, with the glory of God in our county and our state. We pray all these thoughts in the name of your gracious Son. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Dee Dee. Thanks Bill. Okay, approval of minutes, I trust all of you received the revised minutes on your templates today, and had a chance to look at it. If you did, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised minutes. So move.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved as amended. We have one public hearing tonight. If the clerk would read the title of the first public hearing.
In order to the council of the city of Fairmont authorizing, approving, and providing for the acquisition, establishment, and construction of certain public improvements, namely works of internal improvement for the public use, including sidewalks, transportation facilities, and stormwater management facilities, among others, to be located adjacent to Locust Avenue in the city of Fairmont, Fairmont District, Marion County, West Virginia.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak for the ordinance? Anybody to speak against?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit too quick for me.
Sorry.
I do want to speak for, I believe this is just a continuation of what we did last week, properties, and now this is asking for your approval for the actual project itself, which is going to be a public improvement project, and it's going to give us sidewalks, transportation, and any other rainwater, so it's a very good workaholic project.
Absolutely. Say, is there anybody else here to speak for the ordinance? Anybody to speak against? I declare this public hearing closed. Announcements, door?
None.
None?
Just done you, didn't it?
I, I couldn't report that, I think it was last Wednesday, we had a very productive meeting between the mayor, city manager, myself, the county commissioners, some staff people from the county, some staff people from the city, and I am encouraged that there will be a good working relationship between the city and the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any announcements?
Okay. Barry?
There's no saying you can't fight City Hall, but I think that in the last couple of weeks, we've seen that not to be the case. A gentleman was here at the last meeting, he had the food truck of Bellevue, had some issues, and it was only a very short couple of days of that, that our city manager jumped on it with both feet, so the department heads, I believe, were working on the issue, and as I understand it, he's got his issues worked out, he'll be able to keep doing business as he has been, and I'm glad to see it worked.
System worked. That's why I believe it was the very next day.
I think it was, whatever they want to say, they could have put it right.
Thank you Barry. Frank?
I think I have one tonight.
Agent.
I was able to attend the coal show at Olive Night Park, and I looked at good, I liked to talk to the people and see what's going on. There were people from all over West Virginia there. Music was great, food was good, and it was a beautiful day to have that kind of venue here in this town. And it's starting to advertise for us, the people are seeing the quality, and they're coming, and that's all that matters.
I don't have anything there. Okay. One other thing along the lines of what Barry talked about, and then there was another person who was having some difficulties, that's trying to open a restaurant.
Mary Lou.
Mary Lou Drive. And the same thing happened, Barry, the, we were able to get ahold of the code enforcement department, and the city manager, and we worked out the issues, and fortunately, the reevaluation of the existing ordinance ended up helping her tremendously, and I can't tell you how happy she was, because she's had problem after problem, not just with us, but just things, and poor lady, she was tickled to death, and we were able to help her, and look forward to that as another business in the city. And also to add to what Phil said, the relationship with the county commissioners is excelling, and also the relationship with Fairmont State, Dr. Martin, has been a real good friend to us recently, and also Bob Edcock, who I mentioned before, on some issues, like working on homelessness, and dealing with opportunity that might be announced in the next couple of weeks with Fairmont, and Dr. Martin really helped us pick that together and put it to bed. So anyways, lots of things going on, got a good council, we've got good bones in the city, we've got good people, and we're just starting to gel a little bit together for whatever reason, and it's an exciting time. Okay, citizen petitions, we have two tonight. Nick, if you want to step to the podium and give your name and address, and you have five minutes to just count.
Good evening. Nick Danthage, Director of Mary Regina Development Corporation, 110 Adams Street, Suite Two.
Suite Two?
Mayor, Council, City Manager, I come here to give you an update on the Diamond Street project, as you know, we've been working on this for some time. The initial dirt work first began occurring two weeks ago, and we ran into a week's worth of rain, it slowed us down a little bit, but footers, excavation work started again on Monday, footers went in the ground today for house number one, footers are going into the ground tomorrow for house number two, we are anticipating the May Brothers truck delivering blocks at some point on Thursday, and White Lightning will do leg blocks on Friday and Saturday. We have successfully finished an agreement with Cook Brothers to do the stick work on the two homes, we think will be under roof at some point before the end of July, and if everything goes okay, sometime after Labor Day, we're anticipating some substantial completion. But I want to give you an update, you all have been very helpful. In addition to the update, I would like to do a couple shout outs. Ken Fletcher, remarkable, he has come out and helped us through a coal situation, he's helped us through several different inspections for our footers, city water department, we began the excavation, we struck water, and they came out and solved the problem where a couple pipes that we didn't, no one thought existed, existed, they took care of all of that. I just, over and over again, I think staff have shown their professionalism, and give them a pat on the back when you stand there.
I really appreciate those comments, I certainly welcome, thank you.
Very good. Welcome, any questions?
You, that's the first structure you're talking about, you're gonna have two by the question? Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do, we did the subdivision, we put together the Berenice for two homes, spot ten and spot twelve, we'll be doing both of those simultaneously.
Ooh. Like we said, when we talked, very exciting, anytime you can see something being done, somewhere that you can point to, that certainly you're right in the middle of everything.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, you know, the seeds we planted are beginning to bear fruit, we'll get across the road, excuse me, we'll get across the road, hopefully in early August, RJ, will be bringing replant men to take out those ten houses that are on the property that we bought on the other side of the street. Should see decent, a decent enough rubbing work occurring in August as well, which I think will probably create as much buzz as you want.
Buzz is good.
Yeah. There'll be a big ten acre opening off the Third Street Bridge, it'll definitely catch people's eye.
Yes, it will. Sounds like you're using everything local?
That's the goal, Frank, you know, and we're doing the best we can, I mean, there's been a couple instances where we've had to go outside of Fairmont, we need to pump, we need a pump truck, you know, for some concrete, and that wasn't available locally, but thus far, you know, Omni's done the design work, Rose Pat and Patty's done the legal work, Stan Tech's done the engineering, bricks and mortar coming from May Brothers, the sticks are coming from Plus and eighty-four, now that we've got Cooks in place, you know, the labor's gonna come from Cook Brothers, as we move through this project, we anticipate kitchens coming from Plus and Jacobson-Hutchison, you know, we've got pipe coming from Morgan Pipe and Alton's, we're trying to do everything we can do to generate the NO for you.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I put my old hat on, and I think just like...
Hopefully you'll advertise that, put some signs up, that you are using all of it.
Well, hopefully we'll find an answer to the seat. We need two whole parts.
Okay.
So, the sooner we get that, the sooner we'll want it, I'm sure.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next citizen's petition is Jack Fraser. You'll state your name and address, you have five minutes for discussion.
Name's Jack Fraser, live at ten forty-four Brookside Drive, and I think homecoming is what I'm here about, probably.
Yes, we said Brookside Drive.
We have, we have a garbage issue up there with the apartment at the lower end of Brookside, near the intersection of Belvedere. I was looking in my complaint before, I think I started complaining about them in twenty eleven, and it's still ongoing, and it's just, it's a weekly thing on this. The issues are, number one, the garbage not in the containers, and a lot of times laying on the ground in bags or scattered, you know, garbage is scattered by the animals, our pickup scheduled for Friday, and yet the garbage cans are all, they're by the road twenty-four seven, I don't know why they were allowed to place them in that area, but they're right by the road, you know, visible from anybody driving by. And, you know, I've spoken with a number of people, Brenda, Sandra, John Miller, Scott Joll, Robert Shane, Robert and Shane from the enforcement, and they've all helped, I'm not saying that they didn't do anything, but it's just a recurring problem, it's coming back, you know, I've also spoken with Bill Burdick, Bruce McDaniel, Robin Smith, Tom and El, El Mason, again, they all helped, but it's still a problem there. You know, the way that the codes are written, it says that the, or the ordinance is written, that any of the containers, if they're, if they're not able to put them on the side of the house or the back, where they're not visible from the road, and they have to be in an area where they are visible, they're supposed to be put in maybe plantings or some kind of loading, again, that's not the way this was done. Another part of the ordinance says that they have to be in, that the garbage has to be in the garbage cans, and like I said before, they're starting, their pickup's Friday, same day, and by Monday, at the very latest, there's already garbage laying on the ground, there's cats, sparrow cats that live across the street, the old Davis property, you know, what they do when they smell the garbage in the bag, and then dump all over the road. Also, I don't know how many apartments are there, at one time there was eight, they had ten, had ten, ten mailboxes out there one time. I don't know what the ordinance says, you know, if there's number four apartments or four dwellings, that there should be further mandated to have a dumpster. So, you know, I don't know how many there are now, but I know that at one time there was eight, for sure, and that was just months ago. You know, again, I appreciate the people that helped, and then, and Mr. Mason, just today, got the box springs and mattress taken out, our pickup was Friday, Saturday morning, those, the box springs and mattress was right on the road on those. So, you know, I appreciate what everybody's done, but something permanently's down on this, you know, I'm telling you, in fact, what they do, but it's just been an ongoing problem for a number of years now.
If the code does in fact say that any, you know, number over four apartments require to have a dumpster, I would think that we could require them, give them a code notice and make them have a dumpster, because you're right, and everything you've said is true, it's been an ongoing problem, there's garbage all over the place, it's very unsettling.
Well, you know, one time you were there.
Yeah, yeah.
It was stacked up forever.
And they'll clean it up for maybe a week or two, and then it's like...
They did, I mean, you know, if you get on them, I have got on the, when you people confront them, they do take care of them.
I drove by there today and counted one through eight, so apparently there are eight boxes related to, I presume, eight units. I don't know what the code is, based upon minimum number of apartments requiring a dumpster, but I would suspect they probably hit.
Yeah, the ordinance says four, four dwellings, so if there's one, if there's one or four units, there's supposed to be a dumpster.
I would say we'll follow up on that. Yeah, I feel...
But then there's requirements for dumpster too, so I hope they don't forget that when they, if they do get a dumpster, because it's also supposed to be in a place that's not conspicuous in the road, or plantings or enclosure around it, it just doesn't want to do it.
And it's unfortunate, you know, it's like, I hate to say kids, but you have, they'll do something, they'll clean up the room, and then go right back to it, it's probably unfortunately gonna take your contacting somebody if, you know, we're able to get it done, the follow up part, you know, but I feel very confident that the city manager will check the code and get done whatever needs done, and, you know, keep you in the loop, and we have all, you know, we have issues like that all over the city, and it's a job, but it'll get done, you know, I just feel real confident, but again, then if they go back to their old habits, then I guess we'll need to know that, or else we do it and follow up on our own, so...
Well, I don't have a problem with finding you guys.
You're very professional. We'd rather get it fixed for you, so you don't have to, you can come see us for other reasons.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay.
By the way, you gave me credit for removing the mattress in the box springs, actually it was the city manager.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
City manager's report.
I just want to mention that almost four weeks here, so continuing to learn and study our, study our codes and our operations, and having some good meetings with leaders of the community and citizens, and one thing I can say for sure is that everyone that I've met just clearly has the best interest of Fairmont in mind, and I think with that spirit of collaboration, we're going to be able to do a lot of good things. I was going to mention the meeting with the county, as we have, and I think that that relationship is key, you know, we have to be able to work together with the county, the county is Fairmont, Fairmont is the county, so we need to work together there, and I think that we'll be able to continue to do good things there, and I really don't have anything else to report tonight.
Thank you. On to consideration of council business, agenda item number one is for the adoption of an ordinance, is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Second. Could the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance amending and revising Article Three, the manager of the Fairmont City Charter, and more particularly Section three point oh one, appointment qualifications, compensation thereof, to provide the city manager with the opportunity to live in certain designated unincorporated areas of Marion County, West Virginia, which exists outside the corporate limits of the city of Fairmont.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, could the clerk please call the room?
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
No.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodsoe?
No.
Councilmember Manella?
No.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Yan?
No.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes. So this case of the tie, I guess it goes to the mayor to have the, oh, that's not true.
Can't vote twice.
It has to pass by five, regardless of the number of council members that are seated. Under our charter, nothing passes council without a minimum of five, that's how the ordinance stands.
Okay. So I declare the ordinance failed for not receiving enough votes? No, yes, that's... Agenda item number two is for the adoption of an ordinance, is there a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Could the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance amending and revising Article Two, the council of the Fairmont City Charter, and more particularly Section two point oh eight, city clerk thereof, to eliminate the requirement that the city clerk must be a resident of the city of Fairmont.
Any discussion? Could the clerk please call the room?
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilor Yan?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Councilor Grub?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
Okay, I declare this ordinance adopted by unanimous vote. Agenda item number three is for the adoption of an ordinance, is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance of the council of the city of Fairmont authorizing, approving, and providing for the acquisition, establishment, and construction of certain public improvements, namely works of internal improvement for the public use, including sidewalks, transportation facilities, and stormwater management facilities, among others, to be located adjacent to Locust Avenue in the city of Fairmont, Fairmont District, Marion County.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Could the clerk please call the room?
Councilor Yan?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilor Mason?
Yes.
Councilor Grub?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
I declare this ordinance adopted by unanimous vote. Agenda item number four is for the adoption of a resolution, is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Could the clerk please read the resolution by synopsis?
A resolution to council the city of Fairmont authorizing and empowering Valerie A. Means, Priscilla A. Hamilton, and Janet L. Keller to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont for purposes of certain accounts held at Edgar Jones. By the proposed resolution, the council empowers and authorizes Valerie A. Means, city manager, Priscilla A. Hamilton, finance director, and Janet L. Keller, city clerk, to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont with regard to the city's Edgar Jones accounts. The ability of said persons to act with regard to the Edgar Jones accounts is constrained by the investment policy and guidelines planned for City of Fairmont General Fund and Special Revenue Fund dated February sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, which plan has been adopted by resolution of the council of the city of Fairmont, and which policy and formulated guidelines relating to the investment of said funds is either consistent with or more conservative than the investment policy dictated by the provisions of West Virginia Code eight thirteen twenty-two A, and West Virginia Code eight thirteen twenty-two C, and is constrained by the investment policy and guideline plans for Fairmont's Fireman's Municipal Pension and Relief Fund, which plan has been adopted by members of the Fairmont Fireman's Municipal Pension and Relief Fund on June twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, or as further amended, which policy and formulated guidelines relating to the investment of pension funds is either consistent with or more conservative than the investment policy dictated by the provisions of West Virginia Code eight twenty-two twenty-two and eight twenty-two twenty-two A, and is constrained by the investment policy and guidelines planned for Fairmont Municipal Pension Policeman's Municipal Pension and Relief Fund, which plan has been adopted by members of the Board of Fairmont Policeman's Municipal Pension and Relief Fund on December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, or is further amended, and which policy and formulated guidelines relating to the investment of pension funds is either consistent with or more conservative than the investment policy dictated by the provisions of West Virginia Code eight twenty-two twenty-two and eight twenty-two twenty-two A.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilor Mason?
Yes.
Councilor Yan?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
I declare this resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Agenda item number five is for the adoption of the resolution, is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Could clerk please read the resolution by synopsis?
A resolution to council for the city of Fairmont authorizing and empowering Valerie A. Means, Priscilla A. Hamilton, and Janet L. Keller to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont for purposes of certain operating investment accounts at Huntington National Bank Incorporated, Fairmont, West Virginia. By this proposed resolution, the council empowers and authorizes Valerie A. Means, city manager, Priscilla A. Hamilton, finance director, and Janet L. Keller, city clerk, to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont with regard to the city's operating investment accounts at Huntington National Bank Incorporated. The ability of said persons to act with regard to the investment accounts at Huntington National Bank Incorporated is constrained by the investment policy and guidelines planned for the city of Fairmont General Fund and Special Revenue Fund dated February sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, which plan has been adopted by resolution to council for the city of Fairmont, and which policy and formulated guidelines relating to the investment of said funds is either consistent with or more conservative than the investment policy dictated by the provisions of West Virginia Code eight thirteen twenty-two, and West Virginia Code eight thirteen twenty-two C.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilmember Yan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodso?
Yes.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
Declare this resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Agenda item number six is for the adoption of a resolution. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Could the clerk please read the resolution by synopsis?
A resolution to council the city of Fairmont authorizing and empowering Valerie A. Means, Priscilla A. Hamilton, and Janet L. Keller to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont for purposes of certain operating and investment accounts at MBB Bank Incorporated, Fairmont. By this proposed resolution, the council empowers and authorizes Valerie A. Means, city manager, Priscilla A. Hamilton, finance director, and Janet L. Keller, city clerk, to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont with regard to the city's operating accounts at MBB Bank Incorporated.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Could the clerk please call the room?
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Yan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
Declare this resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Agenda item number seven, also the adoption of a resolution. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Could the clerk please read the resolution by synopsis?
A resolution to council for the city of Fairmont authorizing and empowering Valerie A. Means, Priscilla A. Hamilton, and Janet L. Keller to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont for purposes of certain accounts held at West Banco Bank Incorporated. By this proposed resolution, the council empowers and authorizes Valerie A. Means, city manager, Priscilla A. Hamilton, finance director, and Janet L. Keller, city clerk, to act on behalf of the city of Fairmont with regard to the city's West Banco Bank Incorporated accounts. The ability of said persons to act with regard to West Banco Bank accounts is constrained by the investment policy and guidelines planned for the City of Fairmont General Fund and Special Revenue Fund dated February 16, 2012, which plan has been adopted by resolution of the council for the city of Fairmont, and which policy and formulated guidelines relating to the investment of said city funds is either consistent with or more conservative than the investment policy dictated by the provisions of West Virginia Code 81322A and West Virginia Code 81322C.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilmember Yan?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
Declare this resolution adopted by unanimous vote. This time I move to council adjourn to executive session. Is, is there a second?
So moved.
Pursuant to West Virginia Code... 96. West Virginia Code Six, Page 9A, 4B, 2A, and City Charter 2.11A, 1A, to consider matters arising from the appointment, retirement, promotion, transfer, emotion, discipline, resignation, discharge, dismissal, or compensation of a city officer. Do the clerk please call the room?
Councilmember Manella?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloodso?
Yes.
Councilmember Grub?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilmember Mason?
Yes.
Councilmember Blood?
Yes.
Councilmember Yan?
Yes.
Mayor Merrifield?
Yes.
Declare this meeting adjourned at 7:35. There will not be any business when we come out of executive session.